Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the public hearing to order, please. Has everyone got their copy of the town warrant that we're doing tonight? We're going to go directly into the planning board to go through their five articles. Mike?
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the joint public hearing, finance committee. And we'd like to discuss the following articles. We'll start with Article 21. It's the transfer of care, custody, and management and control of town owned land to the Conservation Commission, map 51, parcel 51, Hanover Street, and map 75, parcel 60A on Woburn Street. Winifred, if you want to come forward.
As you know, the Conservation Commission, over the years, has requested transfers of parcels that have been identified in the open space plan, or sometimes there's other parcels that come to their attention. This year, they're requesting a small piece that's a certified vernal pool. And one of the reasons they're requesting that is the vernal pools do not always have protection under the state Wetlands Protection Act. And we have lost several over time, and usually the neighbors are all calling up saying, "They can't fill these wetlands." And in fact, we don't have any control over that. So that's one parcel that the commission is requesting. The other one is a fairly large parcel. It's 10 acres, and it's along the Ipswich River, and it's a wetlands piece that also goes all the way to Route 93 right-of-way. And it's got quite a few pieces of conservation land that are abutting it. And so it just seemed logical to include that one in a transfer. Any questions?
I don't think so. Any questions from the audience? Okay. If not, we'll move on to Article 22. Article 22 is to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington by taking the following action. You want to delete the first two bullets of Section 3.8.9 and replace Section 3.8.9 with, "The maximum floor area used for retail or personal service uses shall not exceed 8,000 square feet on any one lot. In any one contiguous district zone, general industrial, the total maximal gross floor area used for retail or personal service uses shall not exceed 24,000 square feet as a total for all lots in the district." Carol, if you want to talk about this one?
We have always allowed for some retail uses in the industrial district, and those retail uses are generally to supply services to folks working in the industrial area. Recently, we've heard from folks that own land in various industrial parts of town that they would, that they think that that area is too small, that one of the reasons that their employees can't get in and out at lunchtime is because there's no place close by for them to be able to pick up a sandwich. So we're enlarging that district in order to attempt to attract some services for people in the industrial portions of town, so they won't have to be on the highways traveling quite as far to get lunch, or to go to the cleaners, or potentially even a hairdresser or a barber might take space there.
Do you have any questions on this article? If not, we'll move on to the next one. Article 23 is to amend the zoning bylaw and the associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington by establishing a neighborhood activity center overlay district. The parcels to be included in the overlay district are as follows. Middlesex Avenue, map 79, parcels 10, 11, 28A, 29, 30, 31, 31B. Map 88, parcel 13. Map 89, parcels 6A, 7, 8A, 10, 13A, 13B. Map 89, part of parcel 8. Shady Lane, map 79, parcels 11A and 27. Waldham Street, map 79, parcels 31C and 31D. And Nature Way, map 79, parcel 31G. And the Neighborhood Activity Center is something that the planning board is putting forth. We've done this through the master plan committee. And you want to speak on this?
The purpose of this district is to allow mixed use in an area that's equipped to handle it. The state is encouraging smart growth, which is what this district is all about. And they're encouraging it around areas where there are transportation nodes. There are areas that towns can designate to receive somewhat higher density in housing and mixed use of retail, office, and residential space. This is one of the areas that the master plan identifies as a potential for the Neighborhood Activity Center. As some of you may remember, we came forward with this article last year, and we have made a few changes to it this year. One of the most notable is that we have eliminated from the parcel most of the undeveloped land at the end of Jefferson Road. So the district is smaller. It's to encourage redevelopment of the industrial areas in North Wilmington where some of those industries are certainly not at peak capacity, are having difficulty finding buyers because they're really not located in an area that's conducive to industrial traffic. So the changes that we've made were elimination of some of the undeveloped land at the end of Jefferson Road, as I indicated. We have made larger the setback, the side and rear yard setbacks that abut residential areas. That has gone to 50 feet of a buffer area. That does not include an area where the railroad track serves as a buffer to a rear or side We also have increased the amount of open space to 25 percent. And I think there's one more. Oh, and the planning board, in issuing a special permit, the height restrictions in this district are that any building that faces Middlesex Avenue cannot be higher than 35 feet. Buildings behind those, if there are any proposed, can increase to 40 feet. By special permit, the planning board could grant a height authorization to 48 feet. Again, not along Middlesex Avenue. That's capped at 35. The special permit, though, the requirement of that would be that the developer propose some amenities that would be in excess of what the bylaw requires for that parcel. So it might be a park. It might be increased open space as opposed to 25 percent. They might go to a little higher than that. There are a number of things, including various design criteria, that they may be able to respond to that requirement.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I think everyone probably agrees that this area is in dire need of improvement, and this kind of thing is probably going in the right direction. I think one thing that concerns me is the need of all of these special permits. As I go through this article, I see, you know, special permit mentioned a dozen times or so for certain items. I don't intend to go over them in detail, but it seems like there's a large number of places where you've left this provision for special permits. And I just wondered if there were reasons for that. Have you already had inquiries from developers, or are you just...
It's just to give us some flexibility, and developers some flexibility.
And also some more control. When you allow by right, which is, would be the opposite of a special permit, then the items that you can allow or deny are substantially decreased. The planning board doesn't have a lot of options in what they require of a developer. The special permits are being required for the height variance and/or the height limit to 48 feet, and for the provision of affordable housing primarily. And that's where we'd like some opportunity to have some real input with the developers.
In all of these areas where these special permits are mentioned, well, not in all of them, in some, there are conditions that you've laid out to, you know, to give as boundaries of why you would have a special permit. But in some areas, it seems to me it was rather vague. I just mention that for now, and we'll take another look at it.
Yeah, it's quite extensive. Excuse me. The article is quite extension, and you'd have to go through it several times to be a little more specific, so we can respond a little more specifically.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I had a question. This came up in the master plan meeting about the open space. I know that the chart says there's a 25 percent requirement, but there was also some discussion about how much of that is contiguous?
Right. The recommendation that the master plan made was that 15 percent of the open space be contiguous. That was inadvertently eliminated from the article, and we certainly can make that an amendment, or suggest that as an amendment at the town meeting if that's what people would like.
Okay, so that's your suggestion, is that we try to make that modification at town meeting floor?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, if we have any further questions, we'll move on. Article 25, rezone from residential 60 to residential R20, 8 Reed Street, map 23, parcel 112. Petitioner?
Yes, good evening. My name is Dennis Volpe. I live at 8 Reed Street here in Wilmington, and my wife and I, the petition is for this article. I would first like to introduce my daughter and her husband, Jenna. Would you stand up, Jenna? And her husband, Bob. Jenna and Bob are both Wilmington kids. Jenna is a former Wilmington High teacher. She now teaches at Shawshene Tech. They're both living in Lowell today because they can't afford to live in the town that they were born into and brought up in. So the purpose of my article is to try to get some of my two acres of land rezoned so that I can give them a parcel of land so that they can build a house in their town. I don't plan any other development of this property. I live on the property, and I wouldn't foresee any sort of additional division, other than a lot for my daughter and her husband. And if you look at where this is located, there are two streets that are zoned R60 in that particular area comprising about a dozen houses. One is Reed Street, and one is Harold Ave. If you look at Shawshene, where we abut up against, Shawshene Avenue is all zoned R20. And on the other side, if you look at Shawshene River Estates, the density is somewhat higher than even R20. So we're kind of in a no man's land, this dozen or so houses. So that's my game plan, is to, as I say, to try to get this rezoned so I can carve out a piece of property for my daughter and new son-in-law to build a house on. Thank you.
Dennis, can you help me understand what is lacking on this lot now that precludes your dividing it as it is into two?
Frontage. It's zoned R60.
You fail 200 feet on one or both sides?
Yes.
Okay, it's hard to read this, to see that.
The way my house is situated, it's not, it wouldn't provide adequate frontage for a second R60 lot, which would also...
Well, you have frontage on Reed Street, and obviously the houses aren't located properly, you know, the way they are on the ground on these maps, but you do have, you have frontage on Reed, and you have frontage on Harold.
I have no frontage on Harold.
I'm sorry. Am I looking at the wrong one? I am.
I only have frontage on Reed.
I'm sorry. I thought you were on a corner lot. Okay.
It did, yeah. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Article 26, rezone from residential 60, R60, to residential R20, 12 Harold Avenue, map 23, parcel 110. Petitioner here?
My name is Robert DePalmer. I'm the petitioner for that piece of property. I believe that was the piece of property that you were just looking at. I have frontage on Harold Ave, as well as frontage on Reed Street. What I'm hoping to do is to rezone my piece of property, which is 62,000 square feet, from R60 to R20. The purpose would be, I'd like the option of being able to sell a parcel of my land to be able to offset some future medical expenses that I will be incurring. My wife has a degenerative disease, which is going to require her at some point probably to go into a nursing home. She's a Level IV type patient, which means that I'm going to have a very difficult time getting her to have the proper care that I would like her to have in a nursing home. To that end, I would like to be able to sell off a piece of my property so that I would be able to keep her home and be able to write out checks myself for the expenses that she will incur. So the purpose of this is primarily so that I'll be able to keep my wife at home and give her the care that she requires. Okay?
Any questions? Ready the board? Okay, thank you. Article 27, this is a rezone from residential R60 to residential R10 for the following parcels of land located at 20, 21, 24, 25, 29, 33, and 37 Albany Street, 2 and 4 Boyle Street, and unnumbered parcel of Boyle Street, map 11, parcels 48A, 38D, 48, 38C, 38B, 38A, 37, 38E, 38F, and 38X. Petitioner?
Good evening. Jo Marie O'Mahony, 21 Albany Street. I just wanted to kind of give you the background as to how we came about, what we came about originally. We were going to, I'm parcel, I think, 38F on the map. I have three front yards, according to the town, and I have 17,000 square foot lot. We ran into an issue last year. One of our neighbors was trying to put a small addition, to put a one-car garage on her house, which had been approved for previous neighbors. We had three previous neighbors who had no problem getting a permit, but because she was a corner lot, she had to apply for a variance. And we realized at that point that it's kind of a hit-or-miss situation, trying to get a variance to allow her to do that. So originally, we were going to just ask to rezone her lot and my lot. After talking to various members here, we realized that it would be somewhat selfish not to try to give this benefit to our neighbors for little things, like if they wanted to put a deck off their side door, which right now, some of them only have a little stairway because they don't have the available space to put a small deck. We chose, the parcels we chose because it made the most sense on the zoning map, and we also chose them because none of the lots could be subdivided. We're not looking for new development in the area. We love our neighborhood. Everyone's very happy with the houses as they are. These aren't tear-down houses. But we would like everyone to have the opportunity to have a small addition if they want it, to build a larger deck if they so choose. And in doing this research, to realize that we all have non-conforming lots at R60 and barely conforming lots at R10, it just seemed to make the most sense to try to do it this way, rather than to continue having our neighborhood go in front of various boards trying to get permits and variances approved and having it be such a hit-or-miss situation. So that's why we chose what we chose. We specifically excluded, it appears that the original developer retained a 10,000-square-foot lot. We're not sure if it's a buildable lot or not at this point. We specifically excluded it because we don't want new development. We're not looking for new development in our neighborhood. We just want to help, as I said, the people that are already there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any discussion?
This area of town was developed under some official map and old subdivision plans. And when the town decided to rezone its perimeters to R60 to calm growth, this neighborhood was so zoned. It was never developed as an R60, and so these folks kind of suffer from having a larger zone imposed on them. The previous two articles that you heard, that subdivision was actually developed after the land was zoned to R60. But this one is facing some requirements that it probably shouldn't have, and probably should have been eliminated from the R60 zone when the rezoning was done, although I don't know how much development had occurred there at that time. But this young lady that's before you has been into the office and spoken with me specifically, and was also part of my recommendation to her to go ahead and do the favor for her neighbors as well.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Article 28. It's a rezone from residential 60 to residential 20, 9 Revere Avenue, map 10, parcels 23 and 31. Petitioner here?
Tim Penny, 9 Revere Ave, just looking to rezone R60 to R20 mainly for frontage purposes, for the purpose of a construction of one single family dwelling, for me and my family.
I guess we have to ask, what's changed from the last time you came before?
We had since had the site engineered, flagged for wetlands, reflagged, so we are within the boundaries to do it. It's just a matter of how we get there to do it.
Okay, any discussion? Questions? Go ahead.
The Conservation Commission asks that the board not look on this favorably, just because there's so many resource areas that come together at that location. It's in the riverfront. It's next to the wellfields. It's got wetlands and floodplain all on it.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further questions, that concludes the planning board portion.
Article being discussed was that there wasn't enough road frontage. Has that changed at all, or where would the road frontage be for this?
To the best of our knowledge, nothing's changed from the last time. You're welcome.
And the frontage would be on Revere?
But there wasn't enough of the existing house. So would there be enough for house number two?
Mr. Penny has had it resurveyed, is that correct? And apparently, there is indication that there is sufficient frontage to divide the lot. Mr. Penny, are you leaving us with a copy of that new plan? I think that would be helpful.
Okay, that concludes the planning board portion. We're going to adjourn to room nine to discuss the articles. Thank you.
We're going to continue on with the finance section of it. First article is Article number three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of previous years or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If anybody's unclear, the planning board meeting is in, we'll go to room nine. It's an open meeting. Mr. Chairman, we'll be moving to pass over Article three because there is no unpaid bills of previous years that we expect to be paid.
Okay, thank you. Article four. To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer-collector with the approval of the selectman to enter into an agreement under provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws with one or more banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during fiscal year 2008, and for a term not to exceed three years, which will permit the town of Wilmington to maintain funds on deposit with such institutions in return for said institutions providing banking services or take any other action related thereto.
Mr. Chairman, as the article indicates, the purpose is to authorize the treasurer-collector with the selectman's approval to enter into an agreement to do banking services for the town of Wilmington.
Any questions? Article five. To see how much money the town will appropriate for the expenses of the town and the salaries of several town offices and departments, and determine how the same shall be raised, whether by taxation, transfer from available funds, or otherwise, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Well, as the board knows, they have certainly spent many, many hours going through the budget document, which will be voted on at the town meeting. I don't know if the board has any specific questions about the operating budget. If they do at this time, you have all of the information that we have with regard to local aid projections and with regard to any minor modifications to certain of the line items.
Any questions from the audience? Next, Article six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from any available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purchase of new and/or replacement capital equipment, including but not limited to the following items, and further to authorize the sale, trade-in, conveyance, or other disposition of any equipment being so replaced. Such funds to be spent by the town department so indicated with the approval of the town manager and to the extent set forth in Chapter 592 of the Acts of 1950. The board of selectmen as follows. Police Department, purchase five replacement police cruisers.
Mr. Chairman, all of these capital articles can also be spoken to, if you would like, by representatives in the various departments. So if you have any questions beyond, and I know that the board has already talked with them, but if you have any questions beyond the more broad statements that I will make on these issues, please feel free to call upon those individuals. We are looking to replace five police cruisers at the police department, which is an optimum number for us, which is what we try to do each year, although sometimes we're not able to purchase as many of the five. But these are frontline cruisers that receive a great deal of use, obviously, because they're used seven days a week, 24 hours a day. The price that we have before us is $28,729 per cruiser, for a total of $143,645. That's the amount of money that we'll be asking for at town meeting.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Next, yes?
I think it's important for the people in the audience to understand that we've had meetings with every department in the town, and have gone through a significant amount of questions and so forth. Some people may not be aware that these meetings take place because we've had a very sparse attendance, but these things have been worked over pretty good. So the fact that the board up here isn't going to ask a lot of So the fact that the board up here isn't going to ask a lot of questions tonight, you should not take that as questions not having been asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Next is Department of Public Works. Purchase of one front-end loader with snowblower and one one-ton dump truck for the Highway Division and one heavy-duty field mower for the Parks and Grounds Division or take any other action related thereto.
Mr. Chairman, these are replacement vehicles that will assist the Department of Public Works in their responsibilities around town. The front-end loader with snowblower is estimated to be $180,000. The one-ton dump truck, which would be assigned to the Highway Division, is $57,000. And the heavy-duty field mower that would be, that would replace the current mower for the Parks and Grounds Division is estimated to be $70,000.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Next, Article seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the replacement of approximately 1,325 square feet of roof area above the Barrows Auditorium at the Wilmington High School or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Public Buildings Department has identified this area of roof at the high school as a priority site for repair. As you know, we do roof repair staggered throughout the community each year in, in various locations in order to keep up with that preventive maintenance operation. In this case, we'll be asking for approximately $55,000. And all of these items, obviously, go out to bid, so these are estimates, but we believe the $55,000 is a good estimate to allow us to repair the roof over the high school auditorium.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the audience? Article eight. To see if the town of Wilmington will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purchase and installation of one 16-section energy-efficient steam boiler and one condenser tank at the Wilmington High School or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Again, Mr. Chairman, we're looking for $120,000 to replace the boiler at the high school. Two boilers were installed as a part of the high school renovations many, many years ago, back in the 80s. The boiler that is recommended for replacement has already required that a section of it be replaced. We believe that the new boiler would be more energy-efficient and would function as a primary boiler to supply heat to the high school. And that would enable the second boiler to function as a supplement during times of extremely cold weather and as a result would not be relied upon for constant operation.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Next, Article nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the replacement of the roof at the Buzzell Senior Center or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Again, this is another roof that has been identified by the Public Buildings Department. The existing roof is 30 years old and it is in need of replacement. In this particular project, we expect that it would cost about $63,000 to replace the roof, which has been undergoing some spot repair and has, in fact, experienced numerous leaks. The shingles have, have begun to deteriorate as we make repairs. So we think it's certainly time to make the, the overall repair at the senior center at this point.
Any questions from the audience? None? Next, Article 10. To see if the library will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money to reconstruct and expand the parking lot and associated grounds at the Wilmington Memorial Library or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Yeah, if you've noticed at the library, since we were not successful in, in being able to construct a new library, we have been trying to do more with less over the past several years. And certainly, kudos go to the library director and staff and also the folks from Public Works and Public Buildings who have been working with them to make the kinds of modifications that we're able to make. Would also be remiss if I didn't recognize the work of the friends of the library. In this case, and we have done some work already in the grounds and inside the library, and we will be, we will piecemeal this to the extent that we can, we're recommending that we expend approximately $77,000 to both reconstruct and expand the library parking lot. The project, as I've indicated, would continue upon these improvements. It would include new drainage, the installation of granite curbing, pavement pulverizing, and expansion of the parking area. The plans would include the expansion of the upper lot in the area to the adjoining house that the town purchased last year or the year prior. And then we would be able to have a connection as well with the upper and lower lots. In addition, new concrete walkways and installation of wood guardrails would also be included in the project.
Any questions from the audience? Next, Article 11. To see if the town will vote to ra, to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purchase of a replacement computer-aided dispatch system for the police department or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chairman, we waited just about as long as we possibly could to make this replacement. The current CAD system and the technology that accompanies it is 20 years old. The original vendor that provided and supported the system no longer exists, and the current vendor no longer supports the platform that's used by the police department. The new system is going to improve records management and dispatch procedures. It can be integrated with other computerized systems that are used by the department. It's compatible with the services from the fire department. It'll access the latest information, management and database systems that are used by the Commonwealth. So we think all in all, this will make sense. We have a very specific number because we've been able to go out and cost this out specifically and will be recommending that we appropriate $69,176 for this purpose.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Next, Article 12. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the, for engineering, surveying, and other professional services to develop an accurate and detailed GIS mapping of the storm drainage system in order to complete the implementation of the final design phase of the project to develop a master plan for the town's storm, stormwater drainage system or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chairman, the, over the past two years, in fiscal year 2006 and this current year, voters appropriated, I believe it was $141,000 in two different segments of funding authorizations in order for us to begin this project. We anticipated the design would be a three-year project, and in fact, this is the portion of the project that would complete the final phase of the preparation of the drainage master plan. The town is doing this through its Department of Public Works and is seeking an additional $89,000 to allow us to complete the project. This particular phase of planning consists of modeling and system evaluation in addition to developing a capital improvements plan to upgrade the drainage system. Ultimately, the master plan would produce a detailed map of the entire townwide drainage system, and it would allow the town in general to protect residents against property damage from flooding and to protect the town's roads and infrastructure.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? None? Article 13. To see what sum the town will vote to transfer into various line items of the fiscal year 2007 operating budget for other line items of said budget and from other available funds or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
As the board knows, this is an article that is put in each year to enable the town to address any deficit issues that occurred during the year by identifying accounts with, with surplus where we can make transfers within the current budget year. Also, if necessary, it would enable us to appropriate from other available funds. Right now, we're having a little better-than-average year, certainly, in, in snow and ice removal, but the, the winter is not over, as we just found out recently. But we're doing a little bit better there. We're doing a little bit better, believe it or not, in fuel because the first half of the heating season went well for us despite the fact that fuel costs are so high. Just to give folks an idea where we were once spending 99 cents per gallon a few years ago, the, we're locked in, I believe, a dollar ninety-three, and I could be corrected if I have the wrong figures. So despite that, we're doing a little better because of the early mildness of the winter. That said, we're still having other issues that we're going to need to address in certain of the overtime, public safety overtime accounts, particularly in the police department because of an inordinate amount of investigations and other things that have taken place over this past year. We are anticipating a need to transfer funds into the Veterans Assistance Account because of our aggressive outreach program to assist veterans and their families. But all in all, I don't believe there's going to be any major difficulty in this fiscal year 2007 budget. Once we're able to determine where the transfers, the pluses and the minuses are going to come out, and as you know, we'll meet with the Finance Committee to go over that prior to town meeting.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? None? Article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute a sum of money for the purpose of providing senior citizen work opportunities for services rendered to the town in accordance with the town's senior citizen tax work-off program or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chairman, we're recommending that we increase this year the amount of money that goes into this program. For the last several years, we've been appropriating $10,000. We're estimating a need for $12,800. It will enable us to employ, utilize the services of 20 senior citizens who qualify under the town's program to provide 80 hours of service to various municipal and school departments, and we would pay them at a base level of the minimum wage, which will be $8 at that time, $8 an hour. Program has provided opportunities for a few hundred seniors now over the past 11 years. It's been a very, very good program.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? None? Article 15. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any other, any applicable statute a sum of money for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
We're also recommending a slight increase in this particular account in order to adequately respond to the town's desire to fund an appropriate Memorial Day activity and parade as well as a Veterans Day ceremony. So we'll be asking for $5,500.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? None? Article 16. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds to borrow pursuant to any applicable statute the sum of $750 each for a total of $1,500 for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section 9 of Chapter 40 of the General Laws as amended the lease of A, Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Knee Ellsworth Post 2458 of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and B, the American Legion Clubhouse, Inc., in Wilmington for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post 136 of the American Legion or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chairman, for as long as I can remember, and I suspect everybody in this room, the town has made it a practice to provide to the active veterans organizations a sum of money to assist them in their maintenance of their clubhouse and facilities. In this case, we have two active veterans organizations that are standing here in the town, the VFW and the American Legion, and this would appropriate $1,500 to $750 each for each organization.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? None? Article 17. To see if the town will vote to authorize or reauthorize, as the case may be, revolving accounts pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the various boards, commissions, departments, and agencies of the town or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra, please.
This would specifically reauthorize these revolving accounts, two in particular. One is the revolving account that provides compost bins for sale to residents or anyone interested in purchasing same. That is a program administered through the Department of Public Works. And the other is to continue enforce the Title V loan program where we provide loans to residents who are experiencing difficulties with their septic systems or who are required to connect to the town's sewer system. That program is conducted by the Board of Health.
Thank you. Any, any questions? None? Article 18. To see if the town will vote to amend the action taken in Article 20 as contained in, in the warrant of the annual town meeting held on April 22nd, 2006, which authorized the town to borrow the sum of $450,000 for the purchase of the optioned premises, which includes the Buddis Farm Dwelling in Lot 6, which is the real property more commonly known as 165 Cheston Street, Wilmington, Mass. Also known, shown as parcel 13 on the Town Assessors Map 15, by rescinding such authorization to borrow or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Kyra?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, at last year's annual town meeting, the town authorized a borrowing of $450,000 for the acquisition of the historic Buddis Farm property. It was certainly the understanding of the town at that time that if funds were made available from other sources to enable the town to acquire the property, that that would be the preferable option. In fact, the town, through the efforts of the Historical Commission, received a $70,000 grant from the Massachusetts Historical Commission through the Secretary of State's Office, and additionally, a $450,000 appropriation came forward through the efforts of the town's legislative delegation and the Historical Commission. As a result, we are recommending that we rescind now the authorization to borrow. The only thing that might prevent this from happening is if there is any last-minute glitch, which I do not expect at this point. You will recall that the funds were appropriated and, in fact, earmarked, and we were negotiating to, to receive the funds with the Commonwealth when former Governor Romney decided to make some 9C cuts to the budget, and that included funding for Buddis Farm, among other funding authorizations throughout the Commonwealth. The new governor made it a priority to restore those cuts, and as a result, we're expecting to receive the $450,000 from the Commonwealth. That would essentially be a reimbursement to the town for acquiring the property. It is important that we get this authorization off the books because it would lend for a more favorable review from the bond rating agencies if, if we ought to do that, and that's, that would be our recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? Yes?
When does it become unalterable from the state?
Once they deposit the funds at us or...
Well, once we receive the funds. We've, we've made all the arrangements to receive the funds, but as of today, I can turn to the fine woman to my right and the gentleman, where is Ron? And also to my right, Terry McDermott is the museum curator, and Ron Mendez is the treasurer-collector, and I've asked him to let me know as soon as the, the money hits the wire. The money has not hit the wire. We were told that we were going to receive half of the apportionment any day now, so literally the check's in the mail, and we're, we're waiting for that $225,000. But being the conservative gent that I am, I'm going to, I, I'd like to smell the print on the money and then, then decide to go forward with this. If it looks like there's going to be any hiccup, then we would, we would not move in this direction.
Thank you. Any other questions? Article 19. To see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington, revised as follows. Chapter 2, Town Meetings. Section 4, Polling Hours. Delete the language contained in said section, which currently reads, "The polls for the annual town meeting shall be opened at 10 o'clock in the, before noon and shall remain open until 8 o'clock in the evening," and replace with the following. The polls for the... "The polls for the annual town meeting shall be opened at 8 o'clock in the forenoon and shall remain open until 8 o'clock in the evening," or take any other action related there too. Mr. Kyra?
Ms. Chairman, the town clerk and the Board of Registrazers have made this recommendation to move the polling hours for the annual election from 10 a.m. to 8 a.m. in recognition of the many folks who would like to be able to exercise their right to vote. The town, for years, has had all of their elections by bylaw begin at 10 a.m. but it really seems outdated at this point. And many, many folks have come to the polls early only to be turned away. And there's no way of knowing whether or not they return to the polls. So this will offer a greater opportunity for people to participate in the election. And let there be no mistake, I realize that the title of this bylaw is Town Meetings. And as you know, and just for the public to know, the first article of the official town meeting warrant is in fact the election. And that's why this falls under Town Meetings. But this is, and this is the way the bylaw reads. But because the first article is the town election, we talk about the polls for the annual town meeting being opened at 8 o'clock. It is specific to the annual election.
Thank you. Any questions?
Obviously, for anybody who's listening, that wouldn't- if that passes, that would be for 2008.
Next is Article 20, which is rather lengthy. And it has to do with discharges in the storm drain system. Mr. Kyra?
Ms. Chairman, I'm going to ask that the Health Director, Greg Erickson, give a brief summary, an explanation of the purpose for this article. And then if you have any other questions, I know he's available to answer those questions as well as the Superintendent of the Department of Public Works, Mr. Onisite, and the Superintendent of the Water and Sew Department, Mr. Woods. So with your permission, I'd like to call on Greg Erickson.
Please, thank you. Mr. Chairman, as you know, there's an extensive storm drain system throughout the town of Wilmington, catch basins, culverts and whatnot, which all drain into wetlands and other resources, the rivers. This article is to make a bylaw which would prohibit pollutants from being discharged into catch basins and from other places, like parking lots, washing into the catch basins, into culverts, into ditches, and finding their way into rivers and wetlands and other resources in the town, water resources. And the purpose is to stop, to prohibit illicit discharges and to protect those resources such as the wellfields and the rivers. And most of the language in here, that's its intent. It would provide for a fine for people who do dump illegally or illicitly, illicit discharges. And the enforcing agency would be the Board of Health. Because of the agencies that are involved, the Board of Health is the only actual enforcement agency. So we would be just doing what we would normally do in other cases. And that is writing a citation for someone who makes a violation. And that's about the, that's the broad picture. So if there's any questions.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Thank you. Next, and I think last, is Article 24. And again, this is rather lengthy. And our petitioner is here. Mr. Segal?
This article to the bylaw, this proposed article, deals with regulating what's commonly referred to as segways. Most people see me on my segue during the day. That's the device that has been classified by the federal government as an EPAMD, an electronic personal mobility device. And it is a new form of transportation that didn't previously exist. Frequently, people consider it a scooter or something like a scooter or possibly an electric bike or something of this nature. But it actually has very, very different characteristics. And currently, 44 states, at least as of 2005, 44 states have passed specific legislation regarding EPAMDs. And unfortunately, Massachusetts is one of the few that has not. There are other towns within the Commonwealth. I happen to have a copy of Cambridge's here that have passed specific legislation for this. What I'm basically proposing here is very common sense rules in an area where there are no rules. And it's as simple as that. There is, in operating these things, I believe there should be some basic guidelines. The guidelines that I proposed here very much follow the pattern of the 44 states that have passed them. Thank you. And simply put, it's a device that is designed for the sidewalk to be able to interact with pedestrians. It is classified by the federal government as an automated pedestrian. Other devices that may fit into roughly this category would be electric wheelchairs or mobility scooters, things of this nature. But this has some very specific characteristics to it in the sense that it is approximately the size of a person. It takes approximately the same amount of landscape as a person and it interacts with walking pedestrians very well. Some states have dealt with them like bicycles. Some states have dealt with them like electric wheelchairs. They're truly a different class of vehicle that doesn't fit very well into one category. So in reading my proposed article, you'll see that it basically is summed up that if you're on the sidewalk, you have to follow pedestrian traffic signals. You're waiting for the walk light. If you're in the street because the sidewalk is either impassable or there is no sidewalk or you're on a bike lane or things of this nature, then when you're talking about traffic signals, you'd be acting like a bicycle and you'd be looking for the green light, not the walk signal. And all it does is simply codify what should be common sense. But in an area here where there is no rules, there should be some basic guidelines. And that's what this is. I have plenty of information about different issues. The only thing that the state of Massachusetts has addressed with regard to these is in the year 2004, they passed a specific law regarding the operation of motorized scooters. And they defined motorized scooters as any two-wheel tandem device. The device that we're talking about is a segue, which the two wheels are not tandem. So they specifically put that in to exclude segways. There is House Bill 3586 that's currently in committee. It's been in committee for approximately four or five years, the same length of time that this device has existed. It may get out of committee. Nothing in this bill that is currently being presented by Mr. Harold Norton contradicts anything. Basically, it's the same set of guidelines that most of the states have had. And they all, all of the states that have passed guidelines have said that the individual towns can pass their own guidelines as well. I mean, it kind of trickles down, you know?
In your presentation and making this up, did you consult with our police chief and get his thoughts on this?
I actually presented a copy of it to him with some similar source documentation that I gave you. But I did not, I did not have opportunity and/or did not put him in a position to offer endorsement or- I was hoping for his input. I offered that he could present it to me if he wished, but he did not.
That's okay, because I'll put him on the spot. Chief, any thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner is correct that this is something that's being taken up by the legislature at this time. We really don't have a problem with these pieces of equipment that went down the roadway. So I would suggest that it might be prudent to wait for the legislature to finalize their committee on it and make a general law based on that committee's decisions.
Because how many do we have in town? Do we know how many we have in town?
I've seen one.
One?
The petitioner is, I'm not aware of any that might be. Yeah, I've only seen one person. And he's been a great citizen. We haven't had issues with him, not many calls.
Any questions from the board? Dick?
Kyle, Chief, is there any reason why they distinguish between tandem and non-tandem two-wheel vehicles?
I think the purpose, sir, was when they designed that legislation, it was with the motorized scooters. And it was specifically addressing the small little road rockets that the kids had. They were only about a foot and a half off the ground and had the small wheels, but they would do about 20 miles an hour. I mean, any vehicle that's going to ride on a sidewalk that can do 20 miles an hour would be a concern of mine in that situation. Certainly, I would suggest that, you know, if this went forward, we would possibly amend it that all operators would wear helmets as well. I mean, at that speed, it'd probably be a prudent idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the audience?
If I could just respond to the chief's, he may or may not be aware. This particular device, by design, only goes 12 miles an hour for that very reason, so that it would be sidewalk, reasonable sidewalk safe. There's only one manufacturer of this particular class of vehicle. It's not a class of vehicle, I should say. The federal government has, manages it through the consumer product safety people as opposed to any transportation people. It's considered a consumer product as opposed to being considered a vehicle or something of that nature. So it doesn't, it really has a different classification. However, their classification require, in order to fit that classification from the federal government, it has to travel at no faster than 15 miles an hour. The manufacturer has designed into it, it can't go any faster than 12 and a half miles an hour, just for the same reasons that the chief was talking about. 20 miles an hour, I agree, is too fast for the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Just one other item. If you think about it, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to create a bylaw that would sanction a vehicle for one person in a situation where the state doesn't approve of this vehicle. So I only raised that because it ought to be brought up at town meeting again because that's really what we're dealing with. We're talking about authorizing a vehicle that's being used by one person at the present time and not approved by the state. I just wanted you to think about it, that's all.
Legally, it's not a vehicle. So it's not a vehicle being used by one person. And it is not, it's not prohibited by the state. It's not addressed by the state. And it is my personal opinion that the state is deficit for not addressing it. The state also has no law with regard to neighborhood electric vehicles, a very common class of, a federal class of vehicle that is addressed by almost every other state. And Massachusetts has chosen to not address it. And that doesn't mean that they don't exist or they don't have a value. It just means that Massachusetts has chosen to not address it. The Bicycle Lobby, who is a very powerful lobby on Beacon Hill, has been trying to get a bicycle safety piece of legislation passed Beacon Hill for eight years. So when we commiserate about being there for four years, they laugh and say, "Well, we have a lot more bicycle riders and we can't get anything through there either." And we've been trying for eight years. So it's my opinion that lack of action from Beacon Hill doesn't necessarily mean that the problem doesn't exist. And I believe that within the next several years, and if we use the four years that they haven't acted upon this, it's been presented every year for four years and for four years they haven't acted on it. I believe that the chief and this town is going to be dealing with alternate forms of transportation sooner than Beacon Hill will be dealing with alternate forms of transportation. I appreciate the chief saying that I'm the only one using it and I'm a good citizen. But that doesn't mean there should be no rules. And that doesn't mean there should be no guidelines for a person coming into the community that wouldn't know what is expected of them. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments? Seeing none, I want to thank everyone for coming and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? One more paper? We're done.